We're at. So.
Thank you.
And if you could just keep an eye, Ari, if anyone pops in and I don't see it.
I'm gonna go like this. Okay, I'll just point at you. How about that?
All right. Guess that's we're at it. Okay, welcome to the March 11th Select Board Meeting for the town of Georgetown. This is being taped for our YouTube channel and we'll call it to order at 6:01 PM. Is there any public comment? I do not see any.
Perfect. And I just note, John, if folks are jumping at the gun to comment on the proposed fee schedule changes, we'll have a public hearing in a minute for that, just in case.
Okay, yep.
All right.
Oh, yeah, no public comments. I guess it's.
And we have, and we have nothing to be added to the agenda tonight, though I do want to note that we are in receipt of a public notice of an intent to file from Reed State Park because we're in a budding landowner. And they are going to be using approximately 400 Christmas trees collected within the community to restore some sand dune damage. It's something they need to put out to notice. It'll officially be on correspondence in two weeks, but by then it'll be a little dated. So I just wanted to flag that. We have a scheduled appointment in three minutes, so let's see if we can do a little bit of business before then. And that'll be on our fee, public hearing on the proposed fee schedule. I did get minutes out late to folks today, and I do know that one board member was able to review and had a tweak. Had everyone had a chance to review those?
Yes, I'm happy to move approval.
All second.
All in favor?
All right. And that is three to zero. We had flagged to be determined under review because we're waiting for the monthly financials. And those bank statements came in today, so that'll be a part of our next meeting as well. In terms of assessing items, I think we'll want to hold off on the abatement before the public hearing because that's scheduled for 6:05. But I did want to let the board know, we received our certified ratio declaration form from the state. That is what we receive every, oh, perfect, two folks hopping in. And so that certified ratio declaration form is really what we get from the state, giving us a chance to appeal. If we disagree, their metric had not incorporated our statistical revale. And I just note for the board that if we hadn't undertaken that revale, we would have dropped to 53%,
Right.
which would have forfeited all state funding on the table. So it really would behoove us. I will say the due date on returning that form is June 2nd. So I'm going to be recommending we certify at 100, we're able to, but that'll be an action item on a future agenda. Because we have time, I just wanted to give folks the ability to digest that information.
Thank you.
And we are one minute away from the public hearing. So let's see if I can do some correspondence real quick. I just wanted to let folks know that the Department of Marine Resources has named a new supervisor for the nearshore marine resource division. His name is Ben Wall, and there was some good biographical information. Saginaw County Sheriff's Department sent along their monthly incident report. And I think it's great that this month, just under a third, six of the 19 calls were for public service.
Yes.
So hey, that's a good reason to have the sheriff.
I noticed that too.
And I would say that Saginaw County Emergency Management will be hosting a NIMS class on the 18th of March.
Yes.
Folks that are elected officials are encouraged to take that class. It's required, but there really aren't teeth on the requirement. So.
Okay, I was going to ask you that, and we've got somebody in the waiting room. One other question for you, or just want to comment that I thought you'd like to know. Once a week, one of the Saginaw County Sheriff deputies comes down and greets the school kids as they walk into the school. That's awesome. And he's just there, you know, we've noticed it, some of us parents have noticed it. And I wondered what was happening at the school. And so we inquired of the principal. And she said, oh, he just comes every week and greets the kids, which is a really nice way for the kids to learn about public service and having police officers here just in the community, right? Just like we have our great fire department volunteers in the community.
And probably parks his car across the street there just to get people, get their heart pumping.
He does.
And John might be speaking from experience.
Not me.
And, and we did also receive Maine Municipal Association's Legislative Bulletin.
Yes.
The Midcoast Council of Government sent along their monthly newsletter. If anybody would like to view the copy at the office of the Maine Lobster Community Alliance's monthly newspaper, a lot of great resources. The letter from IFENCE 207 was really a sales pitch, but I just wanted to show her the board, we get periodic sales pitches. Some of them are great leads. This one I don't think is really going to be us right now, but I want to keep everyone informed of what comes across this desk.
Well, on that note, some years ago, I had community members talking to me about the fence, you know, between the transfer station and the school. You know, could there be a fence, those kinds of things. So, so to be, that's what it made me think of is if we ever had to, you know, do some repairs or that kind of thing. It's another resource.
Absolutely.
So thank you for including it.
And the last one, thank you, Aria, was that I just wanted to share with the board my back and forth with Tedford Housing. I'll be doing a site visit on St. Patrick's Day to their facility in Brunswick on the way in. And they'll be coming back to the office just to talk about some of the municipal services that Tedford has worked with in the past. So with the end of that correspondence, and now officially a minute late, I turn this back over to John to open the public hearing on the proposed fee schedule revisions regarding subdivisions.
Okay, so 606, they're basically just opening the public hearing to review our fee schedule and two, two additions to it, or two clarifications. I guess clarifications and/or additions. If you want to explain it, if you want me to.
I'm happy to. Effectively, after we adopted the fee schedule, we had had a for all subdivision application related fees, a hundred dollars per lot with a $500 minimum. I know that in the time since the planning board has realized that changes to existing subdivisions, in the past, it had a lesser fee, not $500 to merge a lot that two people already own. So this was something brought forward by the Chair of the Planning Board, and I know he's in the audience. If he wanted to offer any thoughts or background on this.
Let me see him there.
Looks like not.
And I, and I'm seeing not. I must have done a good job explaining that. So with that, if anybody in the audience would like to weigh in on the proposed revisions to the fee schedule.
He unmuted himself.
Perfect.
Anything to add, Bob?
Yep, I'm, I'm fine with what Tyler said. It's, I think it's self-explanatory.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
And I don't see anybody else out there.
All right. With that.
Close the hearing?
You could close the hearing?
I, yeah, yes, that's close the hearing. I have a question.
Okay, close the hearing at 6:08 PM.
Um, the wireless on this fee schedule, I noted that the wireless communications tower application fee is on there, which makes me think of the access road. Do we know when that's going to start? I don't think that started. That's somebody else doing work over there.
They came in for their permit at the planning board.
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday.
So, all right, things are in motion. Great.
Absolutely. I think right now there's still going to be some melt and so on, but, yeah.
Okay, great.
And we will take up action on that public hearing under new business. And so with that, we'll go back to our agenda. We have made it down through minutes, review correspondence, half of the assessing items. And now we're going to hop into the abatement requests for the Finneys on behalf of, from Garrett Finney on behalf of Graham and Catherine Finney on 04R Lot 27 and lots one and two. And just by way of background, Mr. Finney, thank you for joining us. I am gonna, I have a memo that I put together for the board that I'm going to walk through very briefly with my recommendation on the abatement. After that, the board will have a chance to ask me any questions. Or we'll immediately after that go into you to offer any additional thoughts, explanation, et cetera. The board will have a chance to talk with you. And then after that, the board will have a chance to deliberate and make up their mind on the two abatement requests. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. Does, I don't know how much time we have relative to pushing questions to a next meeting or something. If that, if that makes sense, just let me know. If I talk.
I think that we've got a pretty light agenda tonight, so I think we're going to get through these two abatement requests this evening.
All right.
We typically handle those pretty efficiently, so we try to do the abatements when we can right in the meeting that they are scheduled for.
Right.
And so for members of the board, in your packet, I titled it Abatement Request Number 17 because it is the 17th individual abatement request we've received. Again, this is from Garrett Finney on behalf of Graham and Catherine Finney, 210 Beaver Valley Road. The parcel currently is assessed at a land valuation of $1,354,600. The building valuations are at $357,000. I would note that the Finneys are requesting $840,600 reduction in land and an increase of $430,000 to the buildings. A little bit of a summary of their request, the Finneys believe that their property is currently assessed, does not match the current market listings or recent sales in the area. Further, and I quote, "I cannot through my comps justify anything close to its market potential per broker they're currently working with or per Zillow truly, et cetera." And the Finneys also identified several errors in the building record that we'll get to. And I would note that the Finney abatement cites several lots, some of which we will be using in our comparison for likeness. There were a couple of lots that were showing market values of Arousick and Harpswell. And for our discussion tonight, we're not going to be comparing with the out-of-town market values. And a little bit of a breakdown for the land assessment on 04R Lot 27-1. It is 2.9 acres of home site. And that is at 429,000 per acre in the Back River Neighborhood 1. And I'd note that 429 is prior to the factoring. And I would note that the Back River 1 neighborhood saw a magnitude of a little over 1.9 versus the 1.8. And the building side was closer to 1.6, bringing together cumulatively a little over 1.8. So just to share that consistent 1.8 theme that has come up. I would note that they also have a site improvement. And I would just have a couple of building details worth noting, but when I get to my recommendation, you'll see why I'm going to be a little bit light on the building details. I'd note that we, our records indicate that it's a one-story home. The homeowner says it's two stories, four bedrooms, three bathrooms. There is a reduction currently of $19,302 for the basement. There is a 77% factor for the physicality of the building, reflecting that it's 35 years old. And the Finneys note that there is no fireplace, but in fact, a wood stove. And they also noted several errors with the outbuildings. Comparing that parcel, 04R 27-1, the Finneys had cited two, three properties here in Georgetown that we're going to look at. 11R 45B, I'm going to refer to that as the Cove Road property because it will be coming up. That property currently doesn't have an address. It has a one-acre home site of 429,000 per acre in the Robinhood Neighborhood. And 1.02 acres of rear land one in the Robinhood Neighborhood. And again, I'm sharing that while it's not Back River 1 Neighborhood, that 429,000 before the factoring is consistent. And because this is currently just land, there is no site improvement on that parcel as well. Has a total valuation of 781,000. And again, that's just land. So we're finding things somewhat comparable. And I would contend that this is a comparably assessed property. When we get to 10U Lot 12 on Six Pilot House Lane, this is a property that we're all very familiar with as we've previously had an abatement request related to it. I would note, though, that the Harmon's Harbor Neighborhood designation at a higher 660,000 before the factoring really takes this one out of a comparable to really say they're apples to apples. However, we also had 01R Lot 25 on Beal Road. And I would say that this lot as it was presented and how it presents currently on Zillow of the Beal Road does not reflect how it currently is in our records. That is a much larger lot of over 30 acres. And there's currently about 10 of them, and I'm gonna mute folks just for a moment because there's some feedback. But effectively, this lot on our books is 30 acres, many of it in open space. Folks are trying to sell 10 and a half acres of that on Zillow. But I can't really comparably compare that 10 and a half acres to this one because the lot is yet to be split, the determination that it would still be in that same neighborhood and so on. So I really wouldn't contend that 73 Beal Road is a comparable site. Now, I did review some additional properties in the, in the area. I looked at 4R 26A, 199 Beaver Valley Road. It's just on one side of the two lots. And you're seeing a one-acre home site, 429,000 per acre, Back River 1 Neighborhood. Does go into some rear land, and then there are 16 acres of wasteland. And so I would just note that when we're looking at Back River 1 Neighborhood to Neighborhood, there is some comparables. I can't compare the wasteland to something that doesn't exist. So we're looking at the threads. At 04R 26B, 195 Beaver Valley Road, again, right next door, you're seeing two acres of a home site at 429,000 per acre in the Back River 1 Neighborhood. You're seeing two acres in rear land two at a significantly reduced rate, same neighborhood. Four acres of rear land three, a rear land two, and 3.2 acres at 110 per acre of wasteland in that Back River Neighborhood with a site improvement. I would contend that these are comparable lots when we're looking at building or land valuations. And in regards to 04R Lot 28, 200 Williams Road, we have land again in that Back River 1 Neighborhood of two acres. We see it go into some rear land at 5,280 and a site improvement. There were two property cards. And one set of the buildings for a 1980 build was at 430,500. Again, finding a somewhat comparable in building. Card two had a 2017 build of some outbuildings at 100,900. Again, good data to have, but for the likeness, we're really looking at that 1980 build site. In Lot 04R 28B, there was again, no street address. This is land only. And it was a two-acre home site, that same 429, prior to factoring. And I just stress that because that factoring is a key piece in understanding those valuation reports. Some rear land, and because it's only land, there's no site improvement. And the last one that I'm comparing to, again, I'm pulling in that Robinhood Neighborhood because of comparable values, comparable waterfront, et cetera. And we saw a 2.13 acre home site. I would note that this is factored a lot on that parcel due to open space for what that's worth. And so in regards to abatement number 17, in terms of the land valuations, I believe the assessment of this lot is consistent with comparable lots. I therefore recommend a denial of the land valuation. And I recommend denying the abatement for the increased overall building value. But flagging it when we have the assessors on site this summer doing their annual pickup work ahead of commitment to visit that site, because if we're off 400 grand or a belief of that, we want to make sure that we in fact are, you know, is fairly inequitably assessing. But I don't believe increasing an assessment and then supplemental billing, something that we wouldn't normally do in this course would make sense. So that's a lot of words in regard to that first valuation and/or abatement request. If the board doesn't mind, I'd like to go into the second one now and do them both kind of together because they are very connected. And again, this is abatement request number 18. Garrett Finney on behalf of Graham and Catherine Finney. And this parcel has land valuations of $986,300. Buildings of 24,300. There's a requested reduction of 486,300 from the land. And there's a typo in my memo, my apologies. There's a requested reduction of $9,300 for the buildings on this lot. And I would note those buildings are pure rampant float outbuildings, not a house. And so the Finneys contend that this property is currently assessed similarly to the previous abatement. Does not match current market conditions for listing or recent sales. And further, the proposed amounts are based on primarily sales comps, but include some preliminary scouring of Georgetown's property taxes and other properties. The Finneys further cite that there is no access at present to said lot. And in a breakdown of that lot, you can see 1.6 acres in the home site. And one acre of rear land one, that same Back River Neighborhood, same valuations that have been consistent throughout. And I would note on the building details, only outbuildings, pure rampant float, which have been depreciated for physicality, and they were placed in 2005. And the Finneys cited that Cove Road address again. I can go through all of those specifics again if folks would like. But effectively, same Robinhood Neighborhood, same base rate, rear land. To me, this one's even more comparable than the previous one, and it's pretty comparable. In regards to Beal Road, for that same reason that the 10 and a half acres have yet to be split off, the fact that it's an open space, a multitude of factors, I don't consider that comparable. And I did not dive in again to the Arousick and Harpswell pieces that are currently on the market. And so I did dive in and look at those same Beaver Valley properties again. 04R 26A, 199 Beaver Valley Road. 04R 26B, the Williams Road, 04R 28, 28B and 12. So I looked at same properties because again, same neighborhood, same rough amount of land, similar waterfront features and so on. And in my recommendation in comparing this property to similar ones in town, I contend that it's fairly and accurately assessed. And the abatement should therefore be denied. I'd also contend that the access claim wouldn't apply here, given that this lot is adjacent to another lot owned by the Finneys. And would definitely be able to have an easement granted to themselves if they chose. And I would say that the values of the pure rampant float are comparable as well to other like properties placed at that timeline in Georgetown. And just for other folks who are following along, the board in the packet I did provide as backup maps highlighted in yellow or the abatement properties in orange were the comparable properties. And I kept the valuation reports for both of them with the reflective map. So it would be, make sense to follow.
Tyler, I think, take a drink real quick.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask you, just to give a, a very brief explanation for those who are listening as to why you're not and why we will not be considering properties in Pittsburgh, Harpswell, outside of Georgetown. That might be helpful for, you know, those knowledge.
Absolutely. And I think the, the real kicker here is our job is to make sure that we're assessing properties in Georgetown compared to other properties in Georgetown fairly and accurately.
Right.
And so bringing in these other towns, different mill rates, different valuations. You know, I live in Harpswell. I know that they're about to undergo a revale and so on. So our job is to compare things as assessed for value versus necessarily what it's currently on the market for or going for. And these numbers really trickle on down to us through the state of Maine, which requires that we fall within a certain threshold of where the market is. So we're not chasing sales directly. But the market does have an impact, but it's not the total impact on reaching that conclusion.
I think that's helpful for people who, for, for that background, even though we know that, that background for those asking for abatements to know that that, those are the criteria that we must follow in discharging our fiduciary duty. So I appreciate you going through that.
Thank you, Aria. And did the board have any questions for me? And if not, or if they wanted to wait till deliberations, I would turn this over to Mr. Finney to discuss his two abatement requests. And I would say before we jump in, Mr. Finney, I'll unmute you because I think I had to mute you for some background. I would note, I do appreciate folks that actually submit these requests because it's a good spot, check on our work to go through that entire process.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much for your time and your explanation. I have less challenges to your logic, but maybe a few questions. So not necessarily in order. Are you able to share the document you prepared with me? For the, the. That would be wonderful.
Not in real time, but I definitely can offline tomorrow.
Right. So that's one question. The other one was on Lot 1, and again, I'm representing my parents, so I'm a little in between them and you, and they're trying to finalize their estate as they approach 95 or whatever. See, I was not trying to argue that the house should go up in value, although I'm happy to have it assessed properly because it does seem that there are some wonky things in your report. That was merely that the comps I found seemed to suggest a potential sale price and, you know, valuation for their estate at what I thought I was proposing. And I couldn't make the house make sense. I could, I could comp the land and I could comp other things on the island and around in the combination of house and land. So the, I really came to, my argument was trying to construct what I thought the, the current market value was. And then I could construct a number for the land, and the house was just a subtraction addition thing. So I, well, so I'm eager not to argue that the house should be valued more other than fairly. And I think that offline, I would love a better explanation, Tyler, and you've been very helpful the two times we've talked about factoring, because I feel like that's maybe some of my misunderstanding or, or not understanding of when of what's going on and when you're trying to, to match a market value and keep abreast of that. And when you're trying to do something different from the town's point of view for necessary revenues, et cetera, which I'm sympathetic to. So that's, that's actually pretty much all. I, I mean, I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty of why I think it's worth less. Yeah, you know, I've been discovering things on our, on our property that Beaver Valley 30 years ago put the road not where it is on the survey that's in my parents' buying document, and that reduces the acreage somewhat and causes some condemnation for the Beaver Valley Association or for me relative to trying to represent my parents. And I did, I just didn't know things like whether the fact that your record said there was access to Lot 2, which might be sold separately. It says there is, but there's not a road, but there is a right of way already in the, the deed. So that is good for my parents relative to one thing, but I was hoping it lessened the value of the property. And then there's just a general bewilderment that I can't with the, the logic that I have, which is not your logic. I can't make the numbers match up. I understand being wrong, but, you know, particularly for Lot 2, when the broker says it will sell for 350 to 500. And I, I don't know if there's always that disjunction or whether I mean, it's, it's an impossible question to answer maybe, but I'm happy to look at your document and decide if I want to approach a next step or just tell my parents that we're good.
And I, and I can definitely get that to you, Mr. Finney, in the morning. I've got it all keyed up with all the attachments as well that go with it. And I do think, you know, it would make sense to have that property flagged for a visit next year anyway. So we do have the good data on baseboard heat versus, you know, a wood stove versus fireplace and so on. That's all great data to have. And I appreciate you can, oh, I see Brahman. My apologies for talking.
Yeah. Um, I'd like to speak to the issue of the factoring because it's been a problem for all of us. Uh, we were, we were required to do a statistical revaluation of all the property in Georgetown because of some very large properties, not the properties weren't so large, but the payments were very large, which put everything else out of kilter. It's been a problem for all the towns in the coast. And in the process of doing that, the software that our assessor uses for whatever reason or however he set it up, it gives a base value for each neighborhood of property of land in each neighborhood. But in order to achieve the current value or the current tax value, there's a factor that's applied to that base. So I've been complaining about this to Tyler ever since we started doing abatements. But there's nothing he can do about it. We're living with it right now. So when he talks about factoring, it's because the land, your acre of land is not worth $429,000. It's worth 429,000 times 1.8. That's the factor. And that is the same factor that's being applied throughout the neighborhood that's been assigned to your property. So I, I believe that our job is not to tell you what your property might sell for or what it should be listed for with the broker. It's to make sure that all the property in Georgetown is comparably assessed. And then the mill rate will determine the tax rate that the taxes everybody owes on a fair basis. And as the valuation goes up, the mill rate goes down. So the reason that, that the actual tax has gone up is not the revaluation. It's the budget that was passed in 2024. And there's a change in 2025 for sure, to try and keep the budget from. in twenty twenty-five for sure, to try and keep the budget from going up any more than it has to in order to meet our obligations. But I hope that helps to explain it's a, it's basically a computer thing. The factor is a real annoyance and it makes it difficult to understand the valuation card. But it's consistent, uh, from neighbor. Each neighborhood is different because the land, the five islands area, right? Or on Robin Hood waterfront or back river waterfront is going to be worth a different amount than someplace where there's no water. So.
And with, with that explained, my, my parents' tax bill went up seventy percent this year. And that makes so one sense in that their, uh, valuation for the town didn't go up for ten years or so. And they're on the water and pandemic prices and such, but seventy percent, uh, you know, really caught my dad's eye and he said, look into this. So I don't know if every coastal waterfront property has had their factor changed by a great amount.
My property almost, my taxes almost doubled.
Yeah, okay. So if, if we're in the, I just, I want to make sure we're in the same boat as everyone else.
That's how, that, that's why Tyler digs into all those, all those, uh, cards and tries to show us which properties are similar to your property.
Well, great. So Noah, I really want to thank you all for your time and Tyler for digging into this. I would love to look at that document. And if I have questions for you, I'll write you or call you and talk to my folks and report out. But otherwise, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time too.
All right.
And so at that stage, it'd be time for the board to deliberate.
Um, just going by what the, the other local ones there, I would, I would say that we probably would have a motion to deny this abatement.
And we had two
Oh, sorry.
requests technically.
Do I feel one at a time?
We should, just for posterity sake. So we had number seventeen and number eighteen.
Um, number seventeen, I would, um, suggest or, or motion that we, um, deny that abatement request.
Are you moving? I'll second.
Yeah.
And, and I'm gonna need to abstain from this, from this abatement request because I know Garrett and I, I, I think it was, it's likely a conflict for me to vote on this.
Okay.
Okay.
That being said, uh, all in favor of this motion?
I am. And opposed and abstaining. Two to zero to one. And we have abatement request number eighteen as well.
Uh, same thing for number eighteen. All the other stuff's comparable with it. So I would motion that we deny the abatement request for abatement number eighteen.
And I'll second.
All right.
All right.
And I'm, I'm going to stand again. Garrett and I are familiar enough with each other that I could abstain.
Well, good. Um, I should have asked this maybe before you just did that. If my dad wants to pursue a next step and challenge ever more formally, which I don't think will be the case, but what is, is there a process for that?
So we've got a vote underway. So I take the vote, then I'm happy to share what the next steps are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Process wise, I want us to finish a vote. I used to work at the State House and you'd get hauled out if somebody did that.
All in favor?
And so the next step, Mr. Finney would be, we have your abatement applications here. Those that voted in favor of denying the abatement will be signing the rejection for that. And we will be mailing off copies to you. You would have, I believe, sixty days. It's right here at the bottom of the thing. Right here. So you have doesn't say it right on here, but if, oh, right here, sixty days. I was correct. So in the event the abatement's denied, you would forward this paperwork on to the county commissioners of Sagittahawk County. They have what's called a board of assessment review where they've kind of punted it to the relative experts to go in. There'd probably be a site visit. Look at the property, look at the materials that we analyzed here. And then ultimately you would be able to make a, they would make a determination and anything after that would have to be done in court. But it starts out local assessor, you have the right to appeal here through abatement. If granted, great. If denied to the county and so on. Does that make sense?
It sure does. Yeah.
And you're very friendly at the county.
All right. So again, thank you all for your time. Tyler, I'd love to get sent that email tomorrow or the next day. And unless you need me, I'll sign off now.
You are more than welcome to leave unless you want to learn about a fire department contract. I just had to share that.
All right. Thank you. Take care.
And since we now concluded our assessing items, we've concluded correspondence under continuing items. The only bit that I would share is that the main Wistark, main waste discharge license on lot eight R, lot ten has been transferred from Mary Ann Taylor. The Carl Bacon main waste discharge license at eleven R twenty-five has been approved. And the Philippa Dexter, which was been on as a pending renewal, has been renewed as well. O one U lot forty-four. And I turn this over to board members for their board member and committee updates.
Okay. Um, I remember what I've done this week. Um, went to the Shellfish Committee last week. Um, they, uh, had a little bit in their ordinances they had to do just to get in tune with state basically boilerplate stuff. So that's office has got that. And then went to the TOP MB this afternoon and they were just getting their budget done. Nothing really for us to deal with. And then last week, the planning board, they're just trying to get their stuff together so they can, um, actually send out their short-term rental, um, questionnaire survey. That's pretty much all I got right there.
Awesome. Awesome. Any questions for John?
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was thinking this, thinking out loud when you were talking about the survey.
Oh, yeah. Well, no, I sometimes I search for words.
I do that all the time.
Brahman or Aria?
Um, I had, um, conservation last night and they're working on a lot of different things. They had a community science presentation, um, which was recorded and therefore is available for other people in the community who might want to consider volunteering for one of the projects that are ongoing. They, they did acquire some volunteers through that meeting. But, um, Big Night is coming up hopefully as the weather changes. And if you don't know about Big Night, you should watch the Zoom and you'll find out. There's there's still, um, looking for nurdles, the little tiny plastic things that float around and come up on the beach. Uh, and there's, uh, there are plans for the coast, annual coastal cleanup and, uh, suggestions for how to get involved in that. Two, um, kind of unexpected uh, unexpected requests have triggered, um, the desire to create a, some kind of a form and to let organizations know that if they're planning to use conservation land for any kind of event or project beyond just walk and nature walk, that they need to, to get permission from the Conservation Commission. Um, the I forget which teacher at the school is, um, looking to have, do some maple, tap some maple sugar trees. Which is fine with the commission, the commission, although apparently there's some kind of disease attacking sugar maples. And you have to, you can only tap certain size, uh, one tap for a small tree and two taps for a bigger tree. Um, and someone from the Conservation Commission, Roger Bogart, is going to go out and, uh, put tape around the appropriate trees that could be used. But it's a, you know, anything like that needs to be, uh, reviewed by the commission. So they're working on that form. And they're waiting to hear on the resiliency grant, uh, which we have put in along with a tactic for a hydrology study. We've been told that the federal cuts shouldn't affect that money. But of course, we have our fingers crossed on that. And we hope to get the grant, but we don't know. Uh, there may be some acknowledgement by April first. And I think that's all I have to report except that Nancy Kinner, who was, uh, at this meeting and does a lot of work for uh, NOAA, the National Oceanic, uh, whatever it's called, you know, the guys who put up the weather balloons and all that. She was at a meeting yesterday, two days ago, where there were a whole list of words she was told she could not use. Among them, weather, climate and change. Just throw that out as interesting information. That's it from me.
Thank you, Brahman.
All right. Um, the Harvard Committee met, uh, recently working on their budget. And making decisions regarding their, uh, mooring stickers. And so I don't want to speak for them because I'm not certain that all of that is finalized. They were missing one of their, uh, one of their members had a scheduling conflict and couldn't make it. So, um, I will leave it to my next committee update to confirm what I think, where, where I think they're going. Um, and secondly, uh, the Board of Appeals, um, has submitted, you know, has met, um, just the one time, as I mentioned before, Rufus Brown is their, uh, new chair. And they do have a very minor tweak to their ordinance, um, that we will take up at a later time. Thirdly, the school board met on February twenty-sixth for their regular monthly meeting. And then about a week later, they had their, uh, school budget workshop meeting, um, which was attended by various, uh, folks here in town, including our FAC liaison, Mary, me, um, and a few parents. And, uh, the rec committee meeting occurred, uh, in early March as well. Um, they're preparing the big, um, big events there, of course, are forget to know your neighbor, which please mark that down for May fourth from twelve to two at the GCC. We're going to be tapping into our local resources. As usual, uh, for catering the food and hoping that the Georgetown Jammers will be able to join us for that again. They also worked on their budget. I think they completed that, um, uh, with Bob's help to do that. And, um, I want to note a couple of other deadlines. March twenty-seven is the deadline for your citizen of the year nomination. So that can be either delivered to the rec committee email or it can be delivered to Tyler, who will work with uh, the rec committee folks, um, to ensure. And if you know of any new residents, I know Tyler that in the past, when I was working on rec, that we would come to the town office and get as many names.
Yeah.
But there may be folks that, um, we missed because they're renting here and they may not be voting here or whatever. Make sure to, um, let the rec, a rec committee member know so that we can ensure to invite them to this year's Get to Know Your Neighbor Party, um, where the citizen of the year will be announced. And finally, in a sad, um, and a sad, um, update, one of our prior citizens of the year, Don Wilson, passed away, um, on March first, in the evening of March first. So, um, that is a, you know, a, a a loss for our community. And I did want to just note that that is somebody that we will all miss.
Would it be appropriate to take a moment of silence?
I'll defer to the chair, but.
Again, I mean, I did, I forgot about it to begin with though, if that
Yeah.
moment of silence for Don Wilson. I remember when he had the, uh, uh, egg farm, the Costa Egg Farm down there going as a kid, going around there from time to time. So little things I remember.
I have eggs. So in celebration of Don, I didn't know you were going to say that. All right. Anyway, that's, those are my committee updates. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next item of business will be a quick update from me. I wanted to share that the entryway door project is now complete. And I just want to note that includes the handicap accessibility here at the office. The last piece is that runs with lock and key will be coming in tomorrow to change out locks. The plan is to have existing keys continue to work. So don't drop anything off yet, barring any changer. I also was asked by Alex, just to have a reminder that nomination papers are available. And for any questions, see Alex, give us a call at the office and we will get you in touch. Um, I also wanted to note, John had mentioned, we were in receipt of the Shellfish Committee's ordinance changes. I didn't receive those until yesterday, so they'll be on the agenda for the next meeting. And I wanted to also note that on the, at the next meeting, uh, code enforcement officer, Mike Field will be in attendance for two purposes. One, to update us on the Sidemen ledges. There'll be a memo forthcoming for that abatement. And he wants to touch base regarding Blueberry Hill.
Okay.
Because whether or not things are headed to town meeting or not, we're getting close to that time to touch base. I also wanted to mention that I was on a call last week with Mike McDermid with FEMA. And we should be getting approximately thirty-three thousand dollars from FEMA for that January storm within the next sixty days, barring any changes federally that could drag that out. So the good news is it's coming and we just hope it gets here soon.
Yes. And, and just to reiterate for folks who are paying, um, who are participating tonight or may watch later, can you explain where our thirty-three thousand dollars is gonna be, um, applied?
Uh, historically, the discussion has been that it would be going back to reserve funds, though we still technically, the board would have to take action to do so. Though that has been every step of the process. The TOP MB's been very vocal and they would like to restore reserve funding and we really learned with that January storm, just underscored how important it is to have reserves ready.
For sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Aria. And the last thing on my, two last things. Uh, the town report committee is met and there is a cover art contest going on. So if anybody has a great photograph, picture, painting, the like of Georgetown, get it into us and we will have the town report committee decide whether or not it'll be on the front. We had one person reach out and ask if it had to be of Georgetown. And while the answer was not specifically provided by the committee, I'm assuming Georgetown will be getting first picks. And they also have, and I'm going to be reaching out to the principal at some point. They have a desire to have a little section where school kids could offer submissions as well. Whether it be a poem, a piece of art, something about their piece, which doesn't exactly tie into the town report per se, but it definitely would be a welcome addition. And lastly, Aria, I spoke with Mark Donovan today and he is going to be the TOP MB's working waterfront work group liaison.
I'm making my list right now. Thank you. I wondered who that would be. I appreciate that. We're, I think we are now fully assembled.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
And if there are any questions for me, I'll take them. If not, I will gladly pass this over to Chief Whalen and have some more.
Got no questions for you?
No, I don't need a thing, sir.
And Brian, we're gonna go right in and for your update into old business for the consideration of the backup agreement or the backup EMS agreement. So you can just flow right one to the other.
Okay. So you're the update first or, yeah, I can do that. Okay. So, um, thanks for having me, guys. Um, it's been, uh, well, about a month. This is all your last or a little over a month. And, uh, so since we saw you guys last, uh, we've had, uh, seventeen calls for service in Georgetown, um, with eleven of those being EMS calls and six being fire type calls. Uh, one of them was a, uh, an actual chimney fire. But thankfully we, uh, were able to, uh, mitigate that quickly to make sure it didn't go anywhere where it wasn't supposed to. So, um, we're at, uh, twenty-seven calls for the year so far, which is slightly below last year's. But, uh, that's pretty much average, about where we should be for, uh, this time of year. Um, so we've, uh, been out a little bit, but it hasn't been too, too busy of a late winter into spring so far. We've got, uh, our new members have been working out really well. Uh, we took on five new people last year or at the beginning of this year. And, um, everyone's working out really well. They're getting, uh, getting up to speed in department operations and trainings and whatnot. So um, they're already working out to be a really good asset for the department. So looking forward to that. they're already working out to be a really good asset for the department. So looking forward to that, working on getting them trained up and added and more experience. Speaking of new, new trainings and folks, we've got one of our members, Adam Updike, that's just got his paramedic license. So congratulations to him. And we have another member who's licensing out from basic EMT to advanced EMT, Patrick Brown. He's almost done with his clinical time, but once he's got that in, should be also, he's already passed the class. So just waiting, waiting on that ton of stuff. So we're, we're heading in the right direction. So I'm looking forward to having those guys out and responding to calls. So right now, we've got all of our vehicles are in service and operational, which is really nice to have. Like I said, our call volume hasn't been too bad. So it's been good in that way. We've got a couple pieces of equipment out of service. We've got a couple air packs that are not working right now for various small little things. But unfortunately, those are our only two spares. So we have enough for now. But we're just working on getting those repaired, which we have, we sent them out to Winslow, to the Fire Tech, and they take care of it. So not a big deal. We had an excellent discussion on February fifteenth regarding EMS services in Georgetown at the Community Center. I want to thank the Community Center for hosting us there. It was a great venue. And I want to thank everyone who came out to participate in the discussion and, and ask questions. It was a really, really good back and forth, and I'm really glad with how it came out. And yeah, thank everyone for, for coming out for that. Got a lot of good feedback from the community and it had some good discussions. So it was, and it was an excellent day. Upcoming, other than our regular monthly trainings and meetings, I've got some other classes coming up. We're trying to get a pumps class together. So get everybody up to speed on pumping the trucks, moving water around. And we got to get our new folks EVOC certified, which is emergency vehicle operations. So basically, they're, they're driver's test for the larger apparatus. So we'll get them in, up to speed. I've got some other things coming up. We got the SAG chief's meeting tomorrow night. So we'll get back up to speed on what's going on in Zagat County generally. And I've also got the main, main chief's annual conference coming up at the end of March up at Sunday River. So looking forward to spending a couple of days out there to do some educational things, networking and that kind of stuff. And I'm also getting myself into a fire officer class. So trying to keep up my continuing education and, and, you know, make sure, make sure my certifications are, you know, continuing up. So we're doing that. And which we'll get into here in a minute. We've got the backup contract with the City of Bath for ambulance services. And I know you guys got a copy of that earlier in the week. So we'll go ahead and discuss that if you like, and I can answer anyone's questions or concerns and we'll let you know what you have.
All right.
Yeah, Brian, why don't you go through that for us, please? The highlights.
Sure. So the, right now, I've reached out to the City of Bath sometime last year and asked them if they could be our ambulance backup for the town of Georgetown. If in the case where we were not able to get an ambulance crew together, no one was available at a given time, that we would have Bath come down and respond to the call for us. They have come in the past when we've asked them to and needed to. But it's been on a kind of an ad hoc basis in that way, where nothing was written down, nothing was formalized. And, you know, because, you know, they're good neighbors in Bath and they, they came when we asked to help, asked them for their help. We greatly appreciate that. But this just kind of formalizes the relationship and make sure that, you know, in the, hopefully low frequency that we, you know, of events that we have, we don't have an ambulance group in Georgia, or if we need an additional ambulance with licensed providers, then we can call them for assistance. This contract formalizes that. We would pay, the town of Georgetown would pay the City of Bath a flat rate fee for these services. And they would be contracted obligated to respond when we need them to. It would be hopefully at a very low occurrence. Last year in twenty twenty-four, we had a Bath ambulance respond to Georgetown, I think, seven times throughout the entire year, which is the most we've ever had. A few, one or two of those times, I think it was more of a miscommunication more than a real need. Or we had simultaneous calls going on where we didn't have enough responders to handle multiple calls at once. And so those kinds of situations that it would help out for. It also would give us the ability to have them be automatically dispatched if we were not able to respond. You know, if the tone goes out, no one answers after two to three minutes, then Bath would be automatically dispatched at that point. So we could always cancel them in the event that was the case. But if they are dispatched, we still end up paying a fee for that. So we'll have to work out a system where we're not going to be calling them unnecessarily. That'd be my goal, to call them as least as we need to. But it's just nice to have them ready and expecting us to call if we need to. So you guys have any questions?
Do they, do any other towns have a similar agreement like this?
Yeah.
I'm curious if, if we're, if we're comparable with, you know, other, other towns that have the same problem we're having.
Yeah, so there Bath has, has a same similar contract with the town of Woolwich as like a backup. I, and as far as I know, this contract is almost identical to the same rates that the town of Arousik and West Bath are paying also. Now granted, they use Bath as their primary ambulance service. So for every EMS call, Bath is going to them. But this is essentially the same contract with the same language and the same prices. So we're hoping to use them as a backup, but again, just to formalize more than anything else.
I mean, for as far as way, for as far away as we are, if we're getting the same rates as West Bath or Arousik, I don't feel that bad.
Yeah. I do expect these rates to increase July first. You know, cost of everything is going up. So if our rates go up, everyone else's rates going up. But yeah, we are paying comparable rates.
That's good.
Thank you for coming up with that plan, for being proactive about the occasions when we're, when we either have simultaneous calls or we just simply don't have the responders available for whatever reasons those may arise.
I, I've, in talking with Tyler, I understand that we, we need to change the dates on the agreement because of the time lag between getting it to the attorney and back from the attorney and all of that. And is there a question then of whether this would take effect immediately? Or whether it would wait until the new budget cycle?
That's kind of up to you guys. I, on my end, we can implement this as soon as you say yes, go ahead. So as far as right now, in this current budget year, this fiscal year, we do not have a budget line approved for this. We have not factored this into this current year's budget. I have included it in next year's budget. So the implementation date can go, can really be when you guys choose to. I'm gonna leave that up to you, but I believe in this is, I haven't run the numbers exactly, but but as we're doing budget things for next year, we seem to be pretty good on track for being well under our budget this year so far. Now granted, we still have several months left and things happen. So but bar any major incidents or, you know, equipment's breaking or whatnot, we should have enough funds left in our budget to cover any possible uses of this contract between now and July first, would be my estimation.
So my, my preference would be to let it start right away and trust that there are enough contingency funds in various departments. If the fire department budget proves inadequate, but it, it's good news that there seems to be some money in there.
For now, there is.
But I do think that it's good to have backup for emergencies. In any case, that's, that's my perspective.
And it's not to say that if we didn't call Bath right now, tonight, they wouldn't come. They absolutely would. Again, this just formalizes that, what they've kind of been doing already.
And have we been paying them when they come?
We have not. They've been, they've been helping us out. As good neighbors, help out them. So.
All the more reason that I feel we should formalize it and, and pay up because emergency services are in trouble all over the state. We keep reading about that and hearing about it from the legislature. And I think we're very fortunate that Bath is able to back up smaller towns around it.
I agree. I don't, I don't want to overstay our welcome that we've been able to enjoy gratis from Bath. So I, I share your interest in implementing this as soon as we're able to.
So we do have, under the agreement now, the way it's teed up is to have the city manager and myself sign off. So if we were looking for a motion, we could authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement. And just for what that's worth, and then as soon as Brian gets me that updated one with the dates, we can get that turned around very quick.
I move to authorize our town administrator, Tyler Washburn, to execute this contract on behalf of the town. And then once that's finally executed by both entities, that we begin implementation of the same.
Second.
All in favor? And that is unanimous. And I got the key points and it's recorded. This is great.
Yes.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you, guys.
Great news about the new recruits. I like that.
Yes.
Yeah, we're, we're really, really happy to have them and grateful, very grateful. And I think it's going to work out really well.
All right. Well, thank you. And the next item of business is any appropriate action regarding the fee schedule public hearing on proposed subdivision fees?
I'd move to adopt the revised fee schedule that we discussed during our public hearing earlier tonight.
Second.
All in favor? All right, that is three to zero. And lastly, we have on the agenda some ordinance changes. As always, they come into the board and then we will either decide to send them on to the attorney for review or to a public hearing. We have the solar ordinance, solar energy ordinance in receipt. And I see Mr. Trebona is in the audience. If he wanted to share just briefly the one section of the solar energy ordinance that was updated. And I would say, while he potentially is hopping on this call, I do think it was one minor change relatively in this ordinance. I don't see the need to send it on to legal for review.
I agree.
And I would also say on the Board of Appeals ordinance, again, there was one minor change of article, the subsection, I think. And I don't think that would need to go to review. So if there's no comment on the ordinances, we could entertain a motion to forward these to the hearing and then we're done.
I'd move to forward both of these ordinance proposals to the hearing.
All right.
Yeah.
All in favor?
But there's Bob and Sharon.
Hello, Bob. Did you want to share really briefly what the change to the solar ordinance is?
The solar ordinance just took into consideration the fact that if you have an unin- uninhabited building such as a garage or shed or barn, you did not, and you would not have to have the same boundaries restrictions for access to the roof because you wouldn't be being called in.
Hang on, sorry.
Easier said than done.
Thank you.
We wouldn't have the same access requirements on those buildings because there's technically nobody in the building that we would have to rescue. You wouldn't have to go in and, and cut ventilation holes and so on up on the roof. You could do all your firefighting from the ground.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you, Bob.
You would like to thank them?
You're not in, you're not in public comment yet, are you?
Did we vote on that yet or no?
I don't know that we voted on the.
We did, we did vote, actually.
But I'm gonna turn this back over to John for public comment.
Okay, it's public comment.
Yeah, we, we, we were kind of caught off guard last meeting and we were very, very surprised and honored
Yes.
the In the Spirit of America Foundation Award. And we wanted to thank you profusely.
Yes, thank you all very much. We it, it, and it says on the side of our, our tankers, our, our, our engines, neighbors helping neighbors. And that's what we do. And twenty years or more and well, we may not do all the same things for twenty years. We will continue to help out.
And there are many, many people in Georgetown to volunteer and do things and
Yeah.
You know.
For sure.
All the community.
Yep.
We appreciate you.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you.
And we hear that you were surprised, but honestly, you shouldn't have been.
No, I'm serious. We, we were like beyond surprised, Aria.
We did pull it off. We pulled it off then.
You did. You pulled it off for sure. Thank you so much.
I think that was Bronwyn's what's the word I'm looking for here? You know, it was her suggestion, but sleight of hand when she suggested we do it in executive session so that y'all wouldn't find out to the end.
And, and
so good idea.
And eventually, when there's a resolution that we're not talking about the contents, we even enlisted a former law enforcement officer to pump Bob for questions at a landing board hearing to confirm our facts.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, all of you. Yeah, thank you. And, and Tyler, I have already shared that flyer with the entire family and they're going, yeah.
Awesome. Great. Well, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. That's fun.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any, any other public comment? I don't see any, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would move to adjourn.
I'm happy to second that.
All in favor? Yeah, all in favor.
Have a good night, everyone.
Yeah, I'll take care.